All right, good evening, everyone. The time is now six o'clock PM and we are ready to join, uh, to begin our regularly scheduled board meeting for May 19, 2022. I would like to thank you all for joining us this evening. Members of the public who desire to address the board on any topic related to the board must sign the roster located to my right your left by 6:30 PM. Uh, Norma, would you please do the roll call?
Present.
Mrs. Ms. Frazier?
Here.
Ms. Alasar?
Here.
Ms. Wills Hill?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Eliza Moya?
Here.
Naeja Ali?
Here.
Candelora DiNicio?
Here.
Thank you.
Very nice, very nice. Moving on to item 2.2, the Pledge of Allegiance and a reading of the mission statement. Our pledge will be read by Stephanie Mendoza and Michael Sanders and the district statement would be read by Joshua Obi and Aladia Scott Smith. They're here, they're here. See, I looked up for the video and they're here, all right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, made invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission at Carmel Middle School is to graduate college and career-ready students with the knowledge, skills, attitudes, and behaviors to personally succeed and contribute to the common good.
Very nice, thank you. All right, we'll move along to item number three, adopting the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda?
Yes.
I would just need a motion.
I move to sec- uh, to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. English. All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a meeting. Moving on to item number four, showcasing our schools. Item 4.1, showcasing Carmel Community School, Mrs. Miss, I'm sorry, Kelly Moore, our principal, uh, Ms. Marissa Murphy and Mrs. Candace Patterson, Assistant Principal. How are you all this evening?
We're doing well. How are you all doing today?
Very nice, very nice.
So, thank you for having us. Board of Education, Dr. Bird Hansel. We're excited to be able to talk about Carmel. We're finally all together. It's been a journey. Uh, you know, the last two years that we came together, uh, we got to know each other virtually during COVID. We said, you know, we're going to open this school that's been moved to two different locations. We did that, did various models of instruction, and we were happy you were all there with us in January when we finally came together. So, but we're not done because we're getting ready to add K5 to our building next year. So, we're deep in those plans and preparing to be fully K8. That's the pledge, we put it in there. So, a little bit about who we are. Um, looking at our demographics, we're 49% Hispanic and Latino, 20% Black or African American, 18% White, 10% Two or More Races. We have 1% American Indian or Alaska Native, Asian, Native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. Right now, we're sitting with a total population of 340 students. Our projected enrollment for next year, well, we're saying 520, but right now, we're looking at close to maybe 540. We're kind of, everyone wants to come, so we're getting choice forms throughout. Right now, we're about 80% free and reduced lunch. 21 and a half percent of our students are ELL students, so they're English Language Learners. We have 33% of our students with an IEP, which is about 13% higher than the district average. So, we have a lot of students on IEPs. We do have 6.3% um, of our population are also gifted and talented, and 1% are migrant. So, I'm going to turn it over now and we're going to talk a little bit about data.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'm going to kick it off a little bit with our reading data. Um, so we chose to just do a little snippet of our middle of the year, um, I-Ready Growth Diagnostic Data. Um, so this is a picture of where we were at comparing from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. So, if you look in that top right-hand corner, um, we were happy to see that our beginning of the year data was going down, or going in the right trajectory, I should say. So, we started off at the beginning of the year with 59% in that red area, and by middle of the year, we were at 52%. Our green was increasing, our yellow was increasing, so we were going in the right trajectory. Um, can hope to continue on that path as we go to our end-of-the-year data, which is what we are working on this week. Students are completing that end-of-the-year I-Ready Diagnostic, um, so we'll be pulling those numbers here in the next week or so. Um, at middle of the year, 94% of our students were on track to meet that annual typical growth. Um, so this is just looking at students, um, you know, more across the country of the typical growth that they should be making within a school year. And so, 94% of our students were on track to make the growth that they should be making within a school year. So, we were happy to see that our students were on track to do that, um, at middle of the year. So, looking, um, at the breakdown for our grade levels, um, last school year, when we were preparing for this coming school year, our district leadership really charged us to think outside of the box and think about what we could do to really support our students in their reading and writing goals. And so, thinking about us moving into K8 and thinking about what we could do to go beyond the typical structured six-period day where students spent about 55 minutes in their reading and writing block, um, we decided to make everybody a reading teacher and to really extend that reading and writing opportunity in our building. So, for our sixth graders, um, our core teachers were trained in the reading curriculum and in reading strategies, and we extended the reading period from one hour to two hours every single day. And then, for seventh and eighth grade, we put students in interventions for one hour based on their reading scores at the beginning of the year and where we invested in resources that would address their unique needs in reading. And so, you can see the data really shows that we really invested in growing them in their reading skills. So, I'm going to hand it over to Candace, who's going to touch on our math data.
Thank you, good evening. So, similar as Marissa spoke, um, our math data looks pretty similar to reading. We are moving more into the green, more into the yellow. This data up here is comparing beginning of year to middle of year. I was able to pull some, uh, preliminary math data. We are currently working on our I-Ready assessment right now for both reading and math. Um, but if we look up here at the top in the upper right-hand corner, we had about 50% of our students, I'm sorry, 60% of our students sitting in the red, um, meaning two-plus years below in, uh, math skills. We've moved that number down to 52%, which means our yellows and our greens are also, um, moving in the right direction to the point where, um, both the sixth, the ninth, and that 26 have almost tripled. So, definitely moving, um, a lot of great math instruction happening in our school. Looking at typical growth mid-year, so in December, 28% of our students had already met their typical math goal. Um, so they'd only had three and a half months of instruction in math, given we're coming off of COVID e-learning. So, with 28%, almost a third of our students meeting math goals, um, even looking at the ones that have met, um, we had 7%, 8%, and 3% that were coming a rate behind. So, hoping, crossing our fingers for at least 50% of our students to be meeting that goal, um, before the end of the school year ideally. So, just as the reading data showed, um, this breaks down our students' progress towards their annual typical growth. Um, stretch goals, stretch growth goals are looking for above and beyond. With I-Ready, um, students receive a score at the beginning of the year. I-Ready does some great little calculations for us to show where students should progress based on their initial score. So, students may not be in the green, but we know that they are making progress. So, the students in the red is where we really want to focus all of our attention to, to really show some, um, growth in closing those gaps. So, looking at, um, sixth grade, well, actually, let me talk about eighth grade because you're looking at that 0% and you're like, whoa, what is that, right? So, just as a little caveat, um, when students took this test, the, um, I-Ready testing window opened, there was four days that we were given because we were moving. So, students had to essentially cram to get this test completed. Because we were packing up laptops, we were only given four days where the rest of the middle schools were given almost a two-week window. We are currently still testing, so our students have already put in four days worth of testing on their end of year. So, if you look at the stamina that they're putting into, we know that that 0% is not accurate for our eighth graders. If they had been given the full window, um, as their peers, that number would not be sitting at zero. Currently, that number is sitting at 38% and we're not complete. So, we are aware of that zero. We knew what that was going to look like. Um, but again, our students are showing growth, they are making gains, and we are closing those achievement gaps. The last piece that we want to touch on data-wise involves PSAT. We had 90 out of 94 eighth graders take the PSAT, um, back in April, I'm sorry, in March. Looking at the reading and writing, our mean score at Carmel was 375. To be a mean score, College Board recom- um, states 390. So, we are not too far off from hitting that mean score. The district scored 385, so we are slightly behind in the district, but closing in on College Board to hit that mean score. For math, this is kind of our shining star, going back to that zero of that eighth grade. We beat Yes, we actually beat the district by three points for math. College Board's mean score is a 430. So, not only does Carmel have some work to do, we need to look at math district-wide. Our next level of work when it comes to PSAT, when it comes to reading, is to continue our intervention model that we have for reading, sixth grade having essentially two reading blocks, seventh and eighth grade getting reading intervention. Um, looking at the PSAT data for eighth graders when it came to reading, one of the areas of focus for this school year in MTSS has been context clues and vocabulary. We know historically vocabulary is a deficit when it comes to CMAS, so we use that information in regard, also with I-Ready. And when we looked at the PSAT data, our students scored anywhere between 85 and 90% accuracy when it came to context clues. So, we're hoping to see that same, um, growth with CMAS. And then with math, um, we know that we have some growth, some area of work to do with that. Uh, we will continue to focus on just basic math, um, problems, looking at number skills, simple equations. Students need to have those foundations in place to be able to, um, excel and achieve with algebra and geometry, which is an area of growth that we noticed on PSAT data.
All right. So, now we have a short video that we would like to share with you all.
Here at Carmel Community School, we really do try to develop our mission statement, empowering the Carmel community to prosper, cultivate a sense of self, and contribute to the greater good.
Hi, my name is Andrew Miles. I'm in the seventh grade in Carmel Community School. Our school received five-star ratings in academic support, family involvement, school leadership, safety and behavior, school equity, and student support. The parent culture survey received five-star ratings in academic support, school equity, and school support. In the staff culture survey, Carmel received five-star ratings in academic support, family involvement, school equity, and school support. Something that I'm working on this year is strengthening the communication between students and teachers.
Hi, I'm Supreme Mendoza and I'm a student here at Carmel Community School. I'm also a part of RISE Coalition. Community spaces in Carmel include job doors, RISE Coalition, KLSI Connections, Game Like Her Camp, and Round Tables. RISE Coalition is a program that helps scout community by building parks and growing positive community. We are currently working on patrolling a park. We are making sure it's safe and enjoyable for the community. I'm part of the Youth Advisory Council, which makes sure youth have a safe in our community.
I'm Alexander Martinez at ninth grade here at Carmel. Last month, I took the PSAT test in time for the highest reading and math scores in the district. At Carmel, we are empowered through our academics and programs such as AVID, PICA, and PISA.
So, my name is Michael Sanders and I'm a Carmel community student and cultivate a sense of self through our grants. I'm in conservative, repub, ree, militant, junior, STEM, TANIS, and we have a lot of things to do.
My name is Logan Adesola and I'm a student here at Carmel. We cultivate a sense of self through our Amazon technology grants. With this grant, students have worked on creating animation games and stories. Next year, though, we'll be exploring in topics like artificial intelligence, art with computer science, and alternate reality.
Here at Carmel, we cultivate a sense of self through our grants.
My name is Lindsay Byers and I'm a counselor here at Carmel, and I've been overseeing the School Culture Grant for the past year. This grant has given us wonderful opportunities like funding our Challenge Day, where we had Speaker Nathan Harmon come to our school to talk to our students about life choices, and he also hosted breakout groups. This grant also helped fund my web training, where we, we will now be changing our program peer-to-peer to web, also known as Where Everybody Belongs. It's a program for eighth-grade students to help sixth graders, welcome them in, and help our school in general and our community.
We are empowered and contribute to the global good and partnerships like RISE and Church, Cause I Love You, First Team, KPL, and SITO.
So, we actually have two mentoring groups that we're going to, you're going to hear from tonight. The first one is our Pearls of Wisdom. They're going to talk about what they do, the purpose of the group. So, come on up, Kamora. Did your friend leave you hanging? So, I'll stand here, okay?
Yeah.
Here's the mic. So, tell the folks about Pearls of Wisdom and why you're there.
Okay, um, um, okay, it says developing the best you in 2022, friendship, family, and community. Our objective were to connect, build self-esteem, install self-confidence, pride, and self-determination. And these young ladies, during our eighth, well, our eighth sess- session with these girls, we worked on goal-setting, healthy habits, positive decision-making, connecting with the community, and working on life goals, including college, including college, military, or work. The students had fun and felt the program allowed them to learn about each other, to be truthful and to speak up for, and to speak up for themselves. They also enjoyed connecting with the link ladies and gaining encouragement. Their final note was, they wanted the season to be longer so they could have more time to connect.
Yay. So, I'm going to put you on the spot. What is one thing that you enjoyed about being part of this group?
Um, one thing I enjoyed about being part of this group is they really connected with us and kind of built us up and made us want to speak out for ourselves, you know?
Thank you. And our last mentoring group, we have some young men, and Mr. Lee, they're going to join us, and they are SITO, which is Southeast Access to Opportunity. They spent a lot of time in our building, working with our young men. So, Mr. Lee, could you come up with these young men? They have a few words that they'd like to say to you.
Thanks. Let me say, uh, thank you so much for being here and it's an honor to be in front of this board. Um, it looks so diverse. And, uh, I've worked with most of you. I think I know everybody except for two people on the board. Um, and those of you who know me, you know that I enjoy and oftentimes look for a challenge. Um, I was with Dr. B five years ago, I guess, with, um, the Denver Foundation when we were, um, trying to get some grant money to do things, uh, through Transforming Safety, um, to reduce the crime and recidivism in the southeast community. Uh, we're currently, SITO's currently in four schools, um, three through that grant, which is, um, Bricker, Wildflower, Panorama. And, uh, I got a call from, uh, these wonderful people and as they were transitioning, wanted to see if we could put a program there. They raised some money, we raised some money, the community is raising money because we believe that much in the program. Uh, SITO does stand for Southeast Access to Opportunity, and, uh, we believe that the, um, without access to opportunity, poverty is perpetuated. And so, what we, uh, go out to do is to try to create, uh, and provide opportunity, opportunity, opportunity. It's basically a mem- uh, mentorship program, and I'm not going to bore you, I'll let these young men speak. Um, but, uh, people ask, why is a mentorship program so important? Regardless of how you define success, every successful person was mentored, and that's what we want to do. So, uh, let me just go ahead, since you're standing here, young fellow, you'll go first?
My name is Qual- my name is Qualley Woods. I'm from Louisiana. Um, I moved down here and before Ms. Lee came, I was getting in a lot of trouble, and he came and showed me how to be a better young man and helped me. He helps me get better grades, and he takes us on field trips and stuff, and we do good, and I thank him for that. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Melvin Woods, and I'm also from Louisiana. I'm fifteen years old, and I joined this group because I knew Mr. Lee could help me with a lot of things and help me improve in a lot of things and help me with some stuff that I want to do in life. And this group is teaching me how to be a better young man.
My name is Juan Reyes, and I'm fourteen, and Mr. Lee helps us do a lot of cool things and keeps us from getting in trouble at school. And he rewards us, like taking us to field trips and stuff like that.
Hello, my name is Joseph Hardy. I'm coming in from North Carolina. Before I was in SITO, I've been into many problems, fights. But thank you, thanks to Mr. Lee, I've been doing better, my grades are up. I've been able to succeed in my classes, and once again, I thank Mr. Lee for that. My name is Joseph Hardy, and thank you.
Hi, my name, my name is Santino Espinoza. My name is Santino Espinoza, and before I was in SITO, I would get in a lot of fights, argue with all the teachers, and when I met Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee helped me with that. And he would just help me get up, bring up my grades, and when we do good things, he rewards us with like field trips and, yeah.
In closing, it's, it's more than the field trips. And it's not really a reward. And we, we have a lot of community members that are supporting us. Our goal next year is to try to have a couple of men, and that's important for that particular school and probably all the schools, but have a couple of men in the building every day in doing the lunch duty, hall monitors, et cetera. So that's our goal for next year. Thank you very much.
So that is Carmel in a nutshell. So are there any questions?
I have a laundry list here. Of not questions, but comments. That one scared you, didn't it? It's like it's a laundry list. What did you do? No, everything's going well. Knowing our ugly, I'll start with the, with the mathematics and the reading. Knowing our ugly, we know where our focus is. The strategic plan is in place. We're working to achieve those things. That's all I have to say about that. We know what we need to work on, and you guys are doing a phenomenal job on focusing on those things. Now to the students, favorite part. We haven't seen the students in, it, it feels like three years, actually. But you guys are amazing, every single one of you. Ms. Kamora, all you got to do is take a breath, man. You have a great speaking voice, just take a breath. You did, you did a phenomenal job, Mr. Sanders, you did awesome. Aladia, you did amazing. Back there, I know you're hiding. It's okay, it's all right. Mr. Quali, Melvin, Juan, Joseph, and Santiago, you guys are amazing. You guys are going to be upstanding individuals. Those are... Having one of my moments, you know? It's good to see young men working hard to do better for their community. Those field trips are the fruits of your labor, you know? And you'll learn that the more you work hard. And so the recognition that you get is the fruits of your labor. It's not just about getting to go somewhere, and, but you guys are bettering yourselves for your community, and it shows. And Mr. Lee, which I had a mentor like you growing up, man. A lot of times, you don't get those examples early on, and it can be detrimental, not just to you, but to your community. And so that we get you young, that way you become those pillars that your community can stand on, is amazing. And that's all I have to say about you gentlemen. You guys are doing a phenomenal job, okay? It gets lonely sometimes, it does. You can see I'm the, I'm the only male up here on this dais, so. Women have always been strong in their community. So we've had a, we've had some, some time period where we haven't had a lot of male figures to take up arms in their community, to fight for their community, and you guys are doing just that, okay? Very, very proud of you guys. And that's all I have to say, so I will...
Reverend, Reverend Lee, I'd like to commend you, not only for overseeing these young men during the process of the program, but you envision bringing other men into the school on a regular basis so that they can interact with these young men. Because we know the programs are wonderful, but meeting with the kids once a week, twice a week, we have to take it a little bit further, and I commend you. And you all are just wonderful, thank you.
I'm not sure how to speak without being repetitive, but first of all, is your name, was Logan? Is that your name that's in the back? I saw you covering your face. But you did a fabulous job in this venue, so I wanted to point out that you have no reason to be ashamed or embarrassed, because you did a phenomenal job. So we should give him a hand, as well as all of those who participated in the video. And so I have said that the missing ingredient of boosting us to a higher level of success is where are the dads, where are the fathers, where are the men in the community that can show examples of we can all do better? So Pastor Brother Lee, we've known each other a very long time. And so I know of the work that you have been doing. We were both really, really young, and our hairs were maybe different colors back then. But I'm just really, really pleased to see that you're continuing on. I know it's a life endeavor, and it is your legacy, so I wanted to say congratulations to you and to all of you who pour into their lives. Thank you.
I don't have much to say, except that all of you guys did a great job. And can we get a picture with all of the students here?
Oh yeah, we have quite a few things, quite a few things to hand out.
I just want to make a comment really quick. Reverend Lee, I, I just, you know, I, I'm going to echo what everybody else has said. We've known each other for about four years, and I am just in awe of the work that, that you continue to do and the, the vision that you have for the community, for young men. And I just appreciate all the work that you've done, and I can't say any more than anybody else already has, except for please continue to do the great job that you're doing, it is so necessary.
So I just want to say thank you to Principal Moore, Ms. Murphy, and Ms. Patterson. Thank you for your hard work and dedication and commitment to making sure our students are being successful. And I just want to commend all our students on speaking tonight and on your presentations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I did see Ms. Byers in the video as well. Thank you for your support that you do. I, I saw your clip, and I was like, oh, yeah, she's right here. So make sure you get some recognition as well. Thank you for all of your support, Ms. Sanders.
So students, if you are here from Carmel, if you can come up and take a picture with the board, and Carmel staff, if you're here also, can you come up? Now we need you all to come in. It's time, right, swish. Swish together. Everybody look over here and say Carmel.
Carmel.
Why, so we're proud.
We're proud.
You are, good. Everybody have theirs? Okay, we have, everybody, let's get one more. Look this way, we need big smiles. Come on, Quali, big smile.
Smile, those dimples.
Nice.
Some people get stage fared, which is good. You have a good one. Y'all all be safe going home tonight.
There's a lot of empty seats in the front, if you guys would like to move up.
All right, we will move right along to item number five, and I've been notified that we do not have anyone here for public comment. So we will forego item five point four. We will flow right on through to five point one through five point three. We have recognition for our Harrison High School State Wrestling Qualifiers. Harrison High School's wrestling coach, Mr. Chris Mason, announced two state qualifiers this year. Ohani Moore, is that correct? Did I say that correct? All right, and he is a senior and state qualifier. And Mr. Antonio Cami Valdez Jr., who is a junior, I'm sorry, and he is also a state qualifier. So we have some items for them as well, and, and we would like to get a picture with you guys.
Couldn't make it, and if you ever raised a wrestler or been around wrestlers, it's a different breed. So I didn't ask, didn't ask what was going on tonight, other than I, I understand, and I would take that for them.
Got you, got you, and, and a, a great person to receive it on their behalf. So yeah, we're... Yeah, we, yeah, okay, all right. All right, and under the direction of Mr. Keith Basalian, several of our high school band students qualified for all-state jazz and concert band. And that includes Ms. Tiana Hayes, who is an eleventh grader, and she is all-state for jazz and all-state concert band. We have Ms. Kaylee Chote. Is it Chote or Shote? Chote, okay. She is a tenth grader. She is also all-state jazz and all-state concert band. Yeah, go ahead and give that. We have Mr. Marquis McLean, who is a twelfth grader. And he is all-state symphonic band, which is, from my recollection, when I was in band, that's the highest band, symphonic. And last but not least, Ms. Cassandra Eckhoff, is that correct? Who is also a twelfth grader and was all-state concert band. And in recognition of your accomplishments, we have some items up here that we would like to give you, and we'd also like to get a picture with you all.
All of them are in jazz band, and they just came from playing at the Broadmore right now.
You know what it's like to be a celebrity now, because you just keep it rolling.
I believe they do.
Right, everybody. Everyone, the cameras, Chris Vee, say one, two, three, band.
Band.
Right on, and you guys sounded great, I heard you warming up.
No, I mean.
That's okay.
All right. Are you going to stay for my speech? That's why I hold the principal guy. I know. Sorry. What?
This is actually very...
What the heck was that?
That's what he did.
Oh, he didn't do it to me, he went like this. He said...
Wait, don't leave. Marvin?
He left.
Okay, so that was Marquis's brother Marvin. He is also a Harrison High School graduate. He just got his certification as a train conductor for Burlington Northern Santa Fe. He is the youngest person in the state of Colorado to have ever achieved that at twenty years old.
Very, wow.
We have that recorded, we'll give those kudos back. There you are, Marvin. We wanted to recognize you for what you have just achieved as a Harrison High School graduate. Once again, come to the microphone and just share.
Such an honor, yeah.
Yeah, that is awesome.
The youngest in, in state history.
Yes, sir.
Come to the microphone, come to the...
Just told you, but um, I just ran through it all over again, but yeah. I'm a 2020 graduate. I came out of high school knowing that I, you know, I wanted to do what I, what I'm doing now. I've always loved trains since I could talk, and from there, I applied with the company, got my certifications. I knew the steps, you know, I took my time with it, you know? And he, what my mom said, and I'm here. And like she said, I'm the first one as RCO certified, Hosler certified, and conductor certified within company-wide of the United States.
Very nice. Very nice.
Congratulations.
Time, I apologize if I interrupted.
No, you are. We are here for the excellence of students and that is what we do. And I charge you with being a, a, a pillar in that arena, because I've never known a, a person of color that's a train conductor before. Like I've never, never even seen that happen, so. Kudos to you, my friend, you, you are one to be, to be praised and to be lifted up in this community, yes sir. That, where that, that's you. I'm su- I'm sure we can, we can scrounge up another bag for him, because I need you to put that on the train and, and weigh that.
I mean, y'all can give me a flag off.
Where did you go to elem- where did you go to elementary?
Um, I went to elementary, uh both Bricker Elementary, I went uh elementary Centennial and uh. Yeah, this was uh my former principal.
Yeah, alright.
She recognized me.
Awesome.
I think I spent like, it was fourth and fifth grade.
Your best years. Your best years, you were there.
And you're 2020 graduate of Harrison High School. So once a Panther, always a Panther.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir, thank you. We won't embarrass you anymore, you alright, we'll let you go now. Alright, um item 5.3, uh we have a graduating student board representative, Ms. Eliza Moya. Of Harrison High School and we have some items for you as well.
I have an item for you guys.
Oh, dear.
Please go first, I like gifts.
But it's been a pleasure um having you on the board. I remember uh when we had our great debate for who our student board rep would be when it was your turn and uh. Oh yeah, I wa- I was fighting folks, we uh, you were my pick. Uh she, she was so bold to ask me, um and, and I saw her twice the day we went recruiting at Harrison High School. And uh when she came back, when we seated her, she asked, am I the student that you were talking about and I said, yes. Because I said, I'm looking for one student and one student only to represent this high school and you've done a phenomenal job of that. Alright.
Okay, well, I was requested that I go to the podium. Yes, I couldn't write, but. If I cry, let's not judge it, okay?
I cry all the time, you know, I just, I got it out of the way, you're good. Yeah, it's alright.
Okay. These past two years on the board have been the longest, yet the most interactive and mind-pushing years. When I was appointing this, when I was appointed this position, COVID had just started and my first day just kept getting pushed back further and further. I couldn't wait for it to come, but now looking back, I think it could have waited a little bit longer. There was a lot of activities that I didn't get to participate in my junior year, but this year definitely made up for it all. This year I got to experience CASB along with countless breakfasts, lunch, and a few guest speakers. There are all of those good memories, oh, I'm sorry, there are all of those good moments, I learned what my true passion and heart was about. I've always known I was going into law, but the uncertainty was with which field. I think my eyes, my eyes started to open the more I came to these board meetings and continued hearing about all these issues and I found out that I had something to say. This year I was able to go to CASB, which just fueled that fire. Not only did CASB, not only did the CASB event itself help me, but so did the teachers I seen every day, along with the board members I seen every two weeks. But I think the moment that solidified my future career was when I seen Dr. Berhangel speak on what she did and why she does it. I remember it like the heavens were opening and God himself was telling me, this is what you're meant to do. From that moment on, I decided that I was going to speak on what I thought needed to be said and as we can tell, it's been going great. Today is my last meeting and as I look back, I can't say anything more than thank you. Thank you for selecting me, thank you for teaching me what it means to be for the students. Thank you for showing me that not everyone is going to be nice and how to deal with it. To my partner in it all. Nayja Ali. I'm gonna miss you so. I'm gonna miss you so, so much. I remember when you first came and I was like, oh my god, she's so gonna not be cool. But now. But now we call each other at any minor con- inconvenience. I know you will do great things because you already are, but just remember to stay true to yourself through all of it. To my dearest Candelaora, I've seen you grow from your freshman year softball to now being elected on the board and I couldn't be more proud. You make the room light up when you walk in and I am just so honored to know that I know you and I had a relationship with you. Just remember, don't get too cool to reach out to me. And with all that being said, your senior student voice representative, Eliza Moya, is signing off. Okay, you got a bunch of stuff.
And we're gonna get a picture with you.
Okay. Yeah, look at her. It's not a very technical swish, but perfect. One, two, three, Nayja. Eliza. Huh?
I was supposed to say.
I thought Nayja needed to smile, that's what I thought.
Alright, one, two, three.
Eliza.
Thank you.
So real quick while we're coming back to our seats, um I just wanted to say that it has been um amazing to watch Eliza grow over this last year and the input and the strength as a student that she's brought to the Board of Education. This position of being a student board rep is a very important position, it should not be taken lightly and Eliza has definitely um led the charge as our senior board member and we're gonna miss her, but I just want to say, thank you, I love you, and I'm super proud of you.
Alright, here we go, moving on to item number six, communicating with the board. Fiscal year 2022 to 2023, proposed budget and financial plan by our own CFO, Ms. Shelley Becker.
Good evening, good evening, I'm well, thank you. Um, we're reflecting our, or I am as well. Um, we're here tonight to present the proposed budget and financial plan for fiscal year 2022, 2023. And I can't say enough just how heartfelt, filled with pride, how proud I am um to come behind such amazing stellar individuals. Um, all of you that will represent all of us in the future. This is why we are here and why we do the work we do, so thank you all of you, thank you for the inspiration and thank you for all that you do. Okay, we have over thirty slides tonight, but I'll keep it, uh we'll keep it moving. Um, I appreciate hearing the laughter, the lightheartedness throughout the room, we can continue that as we talk. I always like to get it a little exciting, so Cory, if you and I need to nerd out a little bit during the.
I've been looking at numbers for the past two months, we're good, let's go.
We're good. Um, so we are excited here tonight to present the proposed budget. So um, couple of compliance pieces we'd like to touch on, that we are here tonight to via our Colorado state law says that all school districts will have a proposed budget presented to the Board of Education by May 31st. Um, hence why we are here tonight. Um, in addition, our own board policy and our operating limitations talks to how we will develop a multi-year financial plan that is related directly to our board's results priorities and OEs. So tonight, our presentation is, as we know, we talk mainly about the general fund, which is our main operating budget for the district, but we also have nine other fund budgets. And we're going to briefly talk about those as well. So again, tonight, just to rehash, tonight is we're just the presentation of the information and that at our next board meeting in June, the second part of state compliance is that by June 30th of every fiscal year, each um school board of education will adopt and approve um as such a budget. So at our June 16th meeting is when we'll have a much shorter presentation and actually take action on the budget. Always like to, um, we know fiscal stewardship, we know, um, we work for our community, we're fiscal stewards. We know that our fiscal stewardship, we practice by, we know we present to our constituents a yearly plan of spending. Spending our public dollars wisely, meet the plan of spending but not exceeding and reporting back on the results of that work and programs. I know oftentimes folks thinks, oh, a budget, it's that annual one-time thing that we do. Uh, we heard Mr. Williams talk about, oh, crunching numbers. But the budget actually tells the story from a fiscal perspective, from the numbers, about our goals and directions. It talks about our plan for educational values and needs. It talks about our resources to meet our multi-year plans. We communicate our financial operations and then again, we report on that progress. And again, here, um, I really love our three pillars, classroom, culture, and community. So as that is our strategic plan, how that ties to um our fiscal work. So again, uh Colorado state law requires that school districts submit a balanced budget and not overspend this on an annual basis. And we'll talk a little bit for- further, but our Board of Education policy, we talk to our general fund reserves, which our policy is thirteen percent of general fund expenditures. Okay, now we're really, let's get into the meat and potatoes. So here with our general fund, um School Finance Act, legislature finished up, May 11th. Um, School Finance Act, I appreciate that we didn't have to go into additional days or times. Um, so some of the information, when we come to you before June, we will have some minor updates and tweaking as everything was finalized after this presentation was done. So again, as we've talked to before, uh inflationary increase of 3.5%. Great, that is based within the School Finance Act, that says school districts will be funded on what is a CPI, a Consumer Price Index. That uh this year is 3.5%. Another piece, we're excited that came forward this year is an increase in special education funding for all districts. Special education funding is based on what's called a tier A and a tier B student. And we appreciate for us here at Harrison, that's an additional 1.4 million, which we're excited to have, which even more so is the continued push and recognition at the state level because special education um is what we might call an unfunded um opportunity. So appreciative of that for this year. Negative factor, um, that's always a conversation for the past eleven-plus years. Again, buy down of the negative factor by 182 million, it would currently 501 million. So what does that mean for us at Harrison? For this year, our negative factor amount is seven and a half million. That means that seven and a half million in state revenue, we are not receiving in this year only. So what that does for next year, our negative factor will only be almost 4.8 billion. So really appreciate again, um, all the different lobbying, constituents, all of us working together in support of education. So let's talk about our students. Um, again, our funded pupil count, so we are looking at a projection for this next year of over 13,000 students. Um, our neighborhood schools, 8,800, and our charter schools, just over 4,200. In our budget, um, we have been a declining enrollment school district and so the, the budget for next year includes 194 less funded pupils from this year. Um, over the past month or two, it's been exciting to see the pockets of development that are happening out and around throughout our district. Um, and touching base with our demographer, that has worked with us on projects over the past couple of years. Um, it's neat to kind of hearing, anticipating, we may have some growth. So that's exciting as well too, because so that's a definitely something we will be looking at and further defining over this next year. Um, I am sitting here wondering, I put, why I would have put numbers in red, because red is seen as the not appropriate color for, in the finance world, maybe I should have done green. But to call out attention to, our per pupil revenue for this next year, 9,624. So we are a district that receives over eighty percent of our funding for the general fund from the state. So when we think about um all those amazing students that we have, um, the funding we receive from the state, $9,624 per student. You will notice, um, there was our PPR for 1920 and then you noticed the downtick in 2021. And that is when COVID hit, when the state was at that point, school districts were having cuts. So it's good to see um that additional revenue for school districts. Okay, so here's some of the additional pieces that are built into our general fund. We're all aware, and no matter where, conversations around wages, inflation. We're very excited uh for our salary compensation package for our staff for next year. This includes a salary increase for all employees. Uh Dr. Claudio had presented, I believe, at the last board meeting, sharing that information, so we're very excited for that as well. Um, again, I mentioned that a declining funded pupil enrollment count of 194. We all know, we also this year, um, it's bittersweet, the closure of two of our elementary schools. Can't not denote, um, continued more focus in terms of para, our, our retirement plan. That goes up a half a percent to 21.4% from, for an employer for this next year. We also have included, we're excited about Aspire Online Academy and some additional operational dollars for the work they do. And our medical insurance, I know we had presented it a prior month on the medical insurance and in a period of escalating and rising costs, um, a 3.6% increase um is a good place to be. So just to real quick, just to re-capture, over eighty-three percent of our revenue comes from the state. And again, um, more to come on Mill Levy and Taber and Gallagher, but this just shows for our general fund, um, the amount of revenue. Salaries, again, just really the point here is to point out, salaries and benefits make up over eighty-two percent of our general fund expenditure. We know we're in the people service industry. Okay, um, without getting too much, um, making us, our eyes all go crazy, really like to point out again, the far right corner is our proposed budget. And there's, we've gone over our local, state, and federal revenues, um, and then our expenditures. And again, as we talked about, salaries and benefits comprising the largest. And again, as we talked about salaries and benefits comprising the largest part of that as well. And again, this format is prescribed by CDE in the state of Colorado into the presentation of the financial information. So always like to start thinking about, well, what happens next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. So as we talk about, and again, our OE, talking about a multi-year plan. Here in the next slide are the current assumptions. And always their assumptions, their variables, they will change. So with that inflationary increase, we are modeling 2% in future years. We all know the hubbub, hearing inflation next year coming in at 7.1%, 7.9%. Should that happen next year, against School Finance Act, school districts have to be funded on what that inflationary number comes in next year. And we usually know the number in February. But it also leads me a little bit to think or to wonder if it were 7.9% and school districts have to be funded on that by constitutionally, might there not be another side to that meaning, might the negative factor go back up? Might they? K-12 represents the largest portion of the state's budget. We represent 37% of the state's general fund budget. So it's not to go unnoticed, again, depending what's happening over the next year. So while we hear that inflationary talk, and it's a very positive for school districts, it also could mean, you know, we're at the call of the state balancing their budget. So with that, in the future, we have the negative factor held constant. In the School Finance Act that has just been passed, it talks to holding the negative factor going no higher for next year. But again, so much still to be determined. Our pupil enrollment, well, we're definitely doing some more studying. It'd be great to be flat and stable and maybe increasing. And then again, continued mandatory increases to para. And to be determined, our stimulus funding, again, that's our 58 million we've received in ESAR COVID relief funding. And we'll just touch on that in our grant fund. But that does end September of 2024. So it's two years out, but again, we're looking out more and doing multi-year planning. I think there's going to be a lot more conversation around this. I've already hearing the terms like fiscal cliff or what have you. Yeah, we're not going to go over the cliff. We're going to be good, but it will involve conversations. And again, so we know on the horizon. Okay, so now we've seen this multicolored slide several times. And what I'd like to point out, this is our multi-year projection and plan. And we're going to focus on the gray section at the bottom. Our fund balance policy says that we will not go below 13% of expenditures. So as we look at our 2023 projected budget, that's the third column, and follow the numbers across, we will see ending fund balance, wow, 24%. That's definitely higher than 13%. We look forward to the next year, 23, 24, our fund balance, 17.98%. Okay, we go to that next year, 12.21%. Yes, that is a little bit below the 13% by 847,000. So it's here, too, as we talk about a multi-year plan. We know we have to, and we would not adopt a budget that had a negative fund balance amount, but it is here for us to talk about and to have conversations into the future. Because as we just talked about, a lot of different variables and changes. But we're very, very optimistic and very excited about the financial future of Harrison. Okay, so real pause, any questions or general fund, or I'm going to get into our other funds?
Can you share what, who sets that 13%? That that's the board that said?
Well, I was just about to, I was going to say the same thing. So we, we actually lowered to 13% for a few months, about half, half a year during COVID, did we not?
We did not.
I thought it was.
We would have come before you to the board to do a resolution to authorize that.
We took it from 15% down to 13%.
That's what we, okay. I thought there was some movement in that, yeah.
I wonder if Cory remembers. So several years ago, we updated our fund balance policy. And it took us two and a half years to get to that point, and I really appreciate that. We took the time with the Board of Education at the time. At that time, the district's fund balance policy was 15 million. And again, 10 years ago, 15 million meant something different than 15 million today. So we spent the time with our financial advisors, if anybody was that remember, they came, we looked at everything and advice from our credit rating perspective, being fiscally sound, being how many months of expenditures are appropriate, appropriate to have in our fund balance. And 13% was the really happy medium place from a fiscal perspective and with the Board of Education. So it's still a really very good. When we did our last bond sale last September, we did receive high marks for our credit rating because fund balance is one component of that that we're rated on. And it also allows, so what that would mean, should there be an extreme large emergency or something might occur unforeseen, and we would need to dip in to that 13% fund balance, that's where the superintendent, Dr. Brhansel and I would come before you. And we would want to have a resolution, a plan and discussion on that.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So you mentioned the demographer, I believe. And so talking about projections looking better, I'm just curious if it's because of the, the growth of the District Two community in regards to affordable housing, attainable, and market rate housing.
So those are great questions. And I'm going to see if Windy or I is going to tag Dr. Brhansel first. I think it's a combination. First, as the, some of these pockets of home developments or affordable housing, our demographer, he did, he spent quite a bit of time physically here in the Springs, walking to all that good stuff. And at first, because I remember Dr. Brhansel and I were like, really? So from that perspective, did not anticipate. What's often seen when affordable housing is produce maybe families that live together now have the opportunity to have their own home. But as our developments have been picking up, and more so, we actually, over the past month or two, to reassess, to think because of additional increased developments. The other piece I'll talk to, and we talk about this, is the positive community excitement and wanting to be here at Harrison. That's something we talk about, our culture. I think that's a part of it as well. I also was reading this week, US News, I think Colorado Springs was ranked number two.
Number two.
Thank you. Okay, good.
You're right. I was going to say it, as you did. And Boulder is number four. So we got two cities from Colorado on that top 10 list.
I have to tell you myself, I just go, wow, every time driving here. I know we all look around the growth, the things that change, you know? We ourselves working on curb appeal because it does matter. So I really think, to answer your question, Mrs. Salazar, I think it is truly a combination. I would also say, we as an executive team talk about, we heard Mr. Bristol present the number of students that choose to leave Harrison. How might some of those students make the choice to come back here at Harrison?
Right, and my thought was, with the new development, we could have increased student populations throughout the district. Also, you mentioned that your projected number of funded students in 2022 and 2023 is 13,057. I'm not sure if you would be the right person to answer this question, but I was wondering what the teacher to student ratio is on that? And then probably Mr. Bristol, correct?
Probably, looking at Dr. Brhansel.
And then, so I was following you through your presentation, and I did not see the number of staff members for the district. And I'm wondering if you could.
I can provide that for you. And as we get there, because I actually have that sitting in my folder there at my seat from FTE, so I'll make sure to grab that, absolutely.
So who is our bond raving through? Is it Fitch or?
Actually, we've had two, Standard and Poor's and Moody's.
Moody's, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
On one of your slides, you indicated there would be an increase of 4.0 FTE.
Yes.
For 2223.
Yes.
And then also it indicated a decline of 194 students. So how does that balance?
Dr. Brhansel is going to go before I can even.
Most of those staff you're going to see are mental health related. So we're putting social workers at every building. One thing that we've had to help educate our community is, yes, we're repurposing two schools, but those kids are still going somewhere. So their staff is going with them. So those positions aren't going away. Like other districts, sometimes you'll have a whole new staff because you're getting rid of the kids. But our kids are going to a different school, so they need staff with them. But that increase in positions, almost all of them are tied to SEL in some way. So they're either counselors, social workers, or special education.
Okay, now we're going to get into our nine other funds. So our first one is our insurance reserve fund. And again, this is all governmental accounting that we're required to record certain financial information in what are called other governmental funds. So our insurance reserve fund is where we have the district's property and liability and our workers' compensation. So when you think about all the risk activities, risk management activities. So expenditures for this next year, on the next slide, we are in a six-year implementation plan of our property values, moving that up to speed, right? Because as we have improved our buildings, for example, Carmel, there's an increased insurance cost with that. And also, too, we're noticing, we've seen a little uptick in our workers' compensation on what may be called increased lost time claims. Again, that's individuals that are out for recovery from injuries. What's interesting to note, so the line of property and liability, that is from 1819, that 452,997, over five years, that is a 300% increase in our property and liability expenditures.
All those new buildings.
Yes, that is a piece. And before, we've talked about the wind and hail. As Colorado has changed, we're like number two behind Texas for wind and hail damage. That has also increased rates. And currently, right now, we'll probably have more information at our June meeting, but cyber insurance is a large thing right now for school districts. And we're actually in the process with our insurance carrier, talking about that. So again, right, we've had increased property. This is though, we need to have property and liability insurance, so we would call this a cost of doing business. Okay, our next one is nutrition services. I am just really jazzed and excited for our nutrition services. We have a lot of exciting things to tackle and to do, but we're very excited. Here, this is the mission statement. We have done some strategic planning with nutrition services in February. And this is our mission statement. We support student excellence and well-being by providing quality meals to all students. So it's very empowering and to hear our nutrition services team as we talk about this and do the work in feeding our students. One thing, we've all heard about that, and I even asked again yesterday, because there have been literally last-minute attempts at the federal level to continue the federal waivers and the change in food programs. And I got the big no. Just wanted to know if there was one last little glimmer. So that is going to be discussion for all school districts. We all know Colorado will be putting something on the ballot, talking about funding for students to eat free in Colorado. But again, we participate in what's called the CEP program, Community Eligibility Provision. So all of our students have always eaten for free and will continue to.
Question.
Yes.
Will our food and nutrition services offer meals over this summer?
Yes, we sure will. And one of the changes in that, that's a great, great question, thank you, Mrs. Frazier. What has happened over the past two years with the federal waiver was, you may have heard the term grab and go, or five-day meal kits. Unfortunately, that is something that has gone away with the federal waiver. But we will be feeding students in June and July, Monday through Thursday. And that's all students 18 and under can come to a school. We have already designated, so we have five sites and locations, and can eat breakfast and/or lunch. So with this next year, we're having a lot of great conversations and more to go, but enhanced menu options and choices for our students. We are starting, we're in the midst of a refresh and rebrand of our nutrition services program. But here's the part of, we all kind of go, you know, oh, no, inflationary increases and supply chain constraints. So again, continuing on, we've already seen over the past several months, fuel surcharges just to get our milk from Inglewood, Colorado, up the road. And just what some of those additional costs with food. And I know we're all in touch with that. So again, very proud of our nutrition services fund. We operate in the black. We're very proud of that. We have a healthy fund balance, but that is something over the next two years, we're really going to be monitoring and paying attention to. So should at any point in time, should our costs exceed the revenue for our nutrition services, that would need to be funded by a transfer from the general fund. So that's definitely something we are keeping a close eye on, but it is all nutrition services departments and with school districts. There's a lot of chatter because of escalating costs and other items. Okay, our grant fund. So our grant fund accounts to, and the finance team today gave me an update, and we currently as a district have 113 open act of grants. We're proud of that, but it also is, in the finance team, we have a team of four people that it takes to manage. And as you'll notice, it's not, it's federal compliance, it's state, CDE, and it's local compliance. In addition to, I know Rachel Loffer has on her team, folks on the front, on the front end of looking for the grants, should we apply for these, writing the grants, and you have the finance team on the backside, we're all working together. Really proud, though, of this work that we have been doing. And I wanted to point out, so if you were to look at, sorry, need to stand by the microphone, total expenditures in 1819, go all the way to the bottom, that 9.108 million. That was before COVID. Now, that, let's fast forward to the column in the far right, 32.6 million. That's an increase of over 350% in four years. And that is largely driven by ESAR, our COVID funding. You can see it in there, ESAR one, two, and three. Again, we're so grateful to be able to have this one-time funding source as a district, what we're doing to step up and additional grants. Any type of grant occupation is one that is in very high demand across because that continues to be the way as the state allocates out funding to entities. Okay, our bond redemption fund. This again is how we are to record the property taxes on our outstanding principal and our interest. This is all of our GO debt. This is reflective of the 2018 bond election we had. And as we look for this next year, our principal and interest payments, just over 14 million. So again, that's the sole purpose of the bond redemption fund. Our capital reserve fund, lots going on with this one as well. Here to my right with us tonight is our fairly new Director of Operations, Levi Schroder, who has passed the six-month mark, I think. And we also have here Laura Drake, who is our planning and project manager. And I think she's probably three weeks in with us. She actually wanted to come tonight. Levi and I, not for yourself, really appreciate that as we all learn. So why I say that is, we are starting in the beginning, very excited. We've had this 2018, we're refreshing buildings. We are going to get back to our capital reserve committee, and we need to be talking and having a five-year capital outlay plan. We know all these great roofs were. We know all these great roofs we're doing. Levi could talk to you all about the gym floors that are going on. But they will eventually have, right, they have maintenance, they have deferred issues that may need to happen. So our five-year capital outlay plan, we're going to refresh that. So with our cap reserve fund, this is where we fund what might be seen as maybe some of those ordinary, regular expenditures, operational buses, our white fleet trucks, mowers, and I'm sorry, I clarified with the ops team that mower should really be under equipment and not a vehicle, so I apologize for that. I had to point that out as we, mowers, the mowing that we do, equipment, um, and sites and grounds, our irrigation, et cetera. So again, the capital reserve fund is funded by a transfer from the general fund. And when, um, you see, if you look at the third column, twenty, 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 twenty-one, in that year, you see, right in the middle, there's a big empty dash. Because of COVID, because of the state reductions, we as a district made the dishes, decision at that time not to provide any funding to our cap reserve fund. So we are continuing that backup. Uh, our building fund really needs no introduction for the Board of Education. As again, this is all of our bond work and our building projects. Coming up this year, Sierra High School remodel, continued remodel, um, of the schools listed there and in the planning stages with Bricker and Panorama. Um, so this one was a bit challenging to get all the numbers here on one slide, but you will notice, and this fund is planned to spend down the funds. So, and again, in our far right corner, proposed budget twenty-two, twenty-three, our fund balance projecting at seventy million, by the end of the year, twenty-eight million. Very intentional. And I think, um, probably another two, two and a half years of all of our bond work. Okay, land acquisition fund. This has been a small, um, fund that has collected, um, revenues off and on over the years that can be seen as due to growth or impact fees or cash in lieu of land dedication. Um, I'm really excited about this picture here. Um, if anybody, I'm sure you all have seen it before. But really proud that the budget this year, our fourth column in, we budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand. We estimate we'll spend six hundred and thirty-eight K. That is for two brand-new softball fields for our girls' softball teams. So at Sierra and at Harrison. So we are, just want to go back one more to look at that picture. Um, our PIO, Christine O'Brien, when she saw this picture, she, I think she kind of said, what did she say? Dr. Berhansel?
The spray on her?
Is that the spray on grass? Um, and right, I appreciate the laughs tonight and hearing, but it really, it, this means so much to us. This has been a year in the works, the talking and saying, we shouldn't have to have Title IX federal compliance people to come here and tell us what's the right thing to do. So I can't say much to see this come to fruition, to know that our softball teams will be able to play this fall on it. Levi and his team are working to protect it like nobody's business. It has orange fencing around it. They're checking the irrigation system, and it's really neat because he has gotten several phone calls. Hey, I see one little brown patch, has somebody checked the watering? So Levi's out there. That just tells you right, how much people care. We have signs going up, Levi made, they may have, and Laura already put them up. They're a very nice positive, both in English and Spanish, saying, thank you for helping us take care of our new fields. They're currently undergoing revegetation, so please don't play on them right now. Um, so we're really excited, and it has been a really neat to hear the buzz, um, and excitement. Health insurance fund, on this one as well. This is, um, our remaining self-insured, our dental plan, medical pharmacy. Um, and again, the district had been a fully insured, partially self-insured medical plan before. And, um, we are the, our medical expenditures are now recorded in the general fund. So this is just accounting for our dental and a little bit of our vision. Last but not least, the pupil activity fund. This is all of our schools doing all that great fundraising for their clubs, activities that they get to use, um, for their students. What you will notice when you look at, um, the third column in fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, you really notice, wow, look at our revenues, two hundred and thirty thousand versus prior year, five seventy, a million. Same thing with the expenditures, two hundred and thirty-two thousand versus prior year, half a million, year before a million. Again, that's the impact of COVID, when we could not gather, have fundraised and activities, et cetera. So this allows our schools to do the additional things they need to for clubs and activities. So here we are, next steps. Um, we'll have some updates, and again, for our adopted budget to come before the board on June sixteenth, um, the School Finance Act. And in addition, on our federal stimulus funding for the board to take action on June sixteenth for the adoption of our budgeted all funds. Um, thank you for your time. Uh, we're excited to come before you again with our budget. Um, we're excited what we have before us as we start this new year, and we are Harrison.
Very nice. I remember when that picture was taken of the color guard. And we had to tell him to smile. I remember that, yeah. Um, great job you guys have done. I remember when we were in the thick of COVID, and these numbers did not seem possible. And there was a lot more red, that we were just, I remember Jenny just put her head down. And she was like, it's not, it's not looking good. And, and now we're on the other side of it, and it, it looks phenomenal. So thank you to your team and all your, your hard work that you guys have done. It's, it's amazing to see what, what the possibilities are now coming out on the other side because we had our head down for a while. We were, we weren't, uh, we weren't thinking it was going to be too pleasant, so thank you for everything that you guys have done.
You're welcome. Anything else, Dr. Berhansel? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, and we will move right along to item number seven, Board Consent Agenda. Item seven point one, Approval of Minutes for Work Session, April seventh, twenty-twenty-two, and Board Meeting, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Uh, item seven point two, OE thirteen, Facilities Monitoring Report by our own Shelley Becker. Item seven point three, OE, uh, two, Superintendent Emergency Succession Plan by our own Dr. Wendy Berhansel. And for item seven point four, I would just need a motion for those items, uh, as the work has already been done, and we are, uh, ma, uh, solidifying that for our records.
I move to approve the Board Consent Agenda item as stated.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mrs. Wills Hill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item so moved. And right along to item number eight, Superintendent Consent Agenda. Item eight point one, May twenty-twenty-two, Personnel Report and Comparison Report. Item eight point two, uh, approval of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three ATU. Item eight point three, March twenty-twenty-two Financial Statement. And for item eight point four, I would need a motion for those items as well, as those items have been discussed also.
I move to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda items as stated.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Frazier, second by Mrs. English. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item so moved. Moving right along to item number nine, Renewal of the Aspen Contract, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. We did have, uh, some discussion about this, uh, for quite some time. Uh, so item nine point two, I would just need a motion to approve the presented contract.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three Aspen Contract.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wills Hill, second by Ms. Frazier. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will see Aspen for another year. All right. And moving on to item number ten, Monitoring Board Performance. Uh, item ten point one, Annual Work Plan. I don't believe we have any changes. Um, do we have any legislative updates?
Um, not at this time. Ms. Becker talked about the ones coming from the School Finance Act. We're still waiting to see repercussions of other legislation that's passed and how it will affect us. Expect in June, or we can come back in August to talk more about that.
Very nice. And we will move right along to item number eleven. I, I did squeeze the legislative updates into that one, uh, into ten point one as well. Um, item number eleven, Executive Session. Uh, the board will, uh, uh, move, uh, into executive session. And, um, according to, I'm so sorry, got a little tongue tied, I'm sorry. Give me a second. Here we go. Okay, I would need a motion for us to move into executive session.
I make a motion that we move into executive session at seven thirty-three PM.
I second.
Can you please read the whole motion? Excuse me, can you please read the whole motion?
Okay, wait, hold on. I move that the Board of Education convene to executive session to discuss personnel matters as authorized and Colorado revised statutes pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four zero two four F. The following people will be attending the executive session, Regina English, J.J. Frazier, Joyce Salazar, Cory Williams, Michelle Wills Hills, Dr. Wendy Berhansel, and Ms. Pam Iragon.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. English, second by Mrs. Salazar. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The time is now seven thirty-four PM, and those names listed are going into executive session. The time is now 7:53 PM and the board reconvenes in regular session after 15 minutes. Board members returning are Mrs. Joyce Salazar, Mrs. Michelle Wills Hill, Ms. J.J. Frazier, Mr. Corey Williams, and Mrs. Regina English. Also in attendance, Dr. Wendy Berhansel. I would just need a motion.
I move to-
Oh.
I move to accept the recommended decision of Human Resources with respect to the non-renewal of licensed personnel as well as the contract not renewed for administrators as presented.
I second.
Motion by Ms. J.J. Frazier, second by Ms. Joyce Salazar. All of those in favor?
Aye.
And motion so moved.
My computer has been tripped with the whole shit.
And moving right along to item number 12, to adjourn, and I would just need a motion.
I move to adjourn Board of Education meeting.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. English, second by Ms. Frazier. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Everyone drive safely with this.